Okay. Going to open the planning board meeting of nine twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen at seven thirty-two P.M.
So motion.
Okay. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, one favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Want to approve a bill of seventy-five dollars for Amy Bernard. Need a motion, second, and a vote.
So motion.
Okay.
Second.
One favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Prove minutes of nine eleven, two thousand and eighteen. Need a motion.
So motion.
Second.
Okay, one favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, first one up is Atwood Estates discussion and possible vote.
Good evening, my name's Jay Tellerman. I'm a partner of Adam Costas and I'm here representing Al regarding the subdivision. We're back before you, kind of following up on a meeting happened a little bit ago. There's been a site visit and some further discussion and some information and we think we're in a pretty good position to answer any questions that you have. Specifically, I draw your attention, I believe, to, I think you would have it, Phil Christensen wrote a memo following a site visit and outlined ten issues that were either outstanding or needed to be resolved in their state of resolution. Most of them were already resolved when he wrote it, or several of them were, and others, we provided some information since to document their resolution by giving some information to Rebecca and providing some other things. And Al is here today too to help answer other items. But we're here as a courtesy to the board to help answer questions. So if you have any questions with respect, I'm happy to go through that list. We're happy to respond to any questions or issues. Al's worked pretty hard with some of the butters to address some issues. But we're here at your disposal, there's nothing formal on for tonight. So we're here to just be as helpful as possible.
Okay. Phil Henry's, okay. Did site number one, limited tree cutting appeared to extend beyond?
Yeah, that does not appear to be the case based upon the review of the site, that the tree cutting appears to be in concert with the plans.
No, there's, what he's talking about Jim is the water easement. Section of the plan where we have to loop the water line next to one.
There was a couple, there was a back lot that had a couple of trees down and...
What back lot?
Well, on the back side of the lot, there were, you could see where the line was and the trees that were cut.
No.
Were many, but there was, there was a few.
I didn't see any.
Yeah.
Neither did Phil Christensen or your Phil, so.
I think he did, that's why he put it on here. But, so, so let's redirect here for a second. So Phil was out there, Rebecca, and then we had, and we had requests in and our, your Phil was out there too and there was, you know, one of the biggest thing was all the, was all the paperwork. Has that all been turned in now? That's all set?
We only received the limited liability insurance for both Evergreen and then also the construction, unit construction that's on site doing site work right now. However, per the decision, there was no requirement to turn it in before endorsement of the plan. So there is some discrepancies there, but I have been in communication with Al and he's slowly getting me the paperwork as we come, as we go along.
So what are we, what are we missing? Because what's on tonight is an eighty-one W vote, so.
Oh, there's been no notice of hearing that we're aware of for an eighty-one W.
Uh, no hearing required that we looked up. But we're trying to get this thing back in compliance. When we left the site, we're in pretty good shape right now. We're going to get the paperwork in. There were some issues with erosion control. Phil Henry was out there, he was going to report. Phil Christensen, these two were supposed together. I see the first two reports. Phil and Phil, have they, has our Phil met up with their Phil again the second time?
Uh, they have not met up the second time. They just presented the two memos that you had before you. One from Phil Henry and then the second one being from Phil Christensen.
Okay, so we still got, these two still have to have another meeting and...
They need to talk.
Our, yeah, our Phil had another meeting tonight, so he couldn't be here for that. So I do see some movement though, which is nice, encouraging, and I see that. I think there was just, there wasn't much on the tree line that, that left side with the water line was an issue, but there was just a couple in the back.
There was one tree, there was one stump that was referenced to as, but that was on a neighbor's property, not... It wasn't any work that Al had done, so, but beyond that.
It's right up on the line there.
Right, right.
Trying to figure that out. So that's why these guys had to go back and forth.
So these are the five that our engineer picked up.
I'm not sure I have that.
I can send the copy to the applicant.
I'm sorry?
Forward order to Al.
Okay.
Yeah, we're perfectly fine on some of the erosion control items. I think there was some around a loom pile and the additional control measures are perfectly acceptable to us. So that would take care of three and four. The quantity of soil, I believe you have that report? Is that, I think that color item before you talks about the quantity of soil removal?
All right. Can Christensen reply to these, please?
Yeah, that's, that's no problem whatsoever.
That's what we kind of want to see.
That's fine.
He writes something, he writes something, okay, let's get, get them together.
That's fine.
Let them, let them tell the board, okay, everything's fine, okay?
Sure.
Rather that happen. All right, now we've taken out, what, fifteen thousand three hundred cubic yards at this point? And we got twenty-two thousand what to go? How much to go still?
About, it's gonna take seven thousand feet plus.
How long is it gonna take to do that?
We stopped calling Phil. We don't need to take anymore out or we're gonna start doing infrastructure. And then, uh, once we get the infrastructure, it'll zoom, you know, water.
So nothing's going on down there now?
No.
Okay. When that's, before that starts up this next time, let us know that. Will that Rebecca know?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we know what's going on.
Because, so, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Phil and where was...
Yeah, basically, I just want to know how much more has to go at this point.
And then, because when we were up there, it was about halfway. Oh, that's what I was saying.
Quite a bit more has been taken out at this point.
Okay, fifteen thousand, okay. Fifteen thousand three. And the water department, I see the letter, thanks Rebecca. So you, were you guys at that meeting on December eleventh?
Water department?
Yeah.
Christensen's right here.
Okay, so... So what's the, what's the final with this, Rebecca? From the water sewer?
The, the water department had to express that they would like a looped water system. Therefore, there was conversations at that meeting as to where that would actually go. There was a proposal to put it at the end of the subdivision, but there was concern about the placement in that particular area. So then they went back to the area that is proposed now and they designated the easement. And so now the water department is just waiting for the applicant to get in touch for a final installation of that particular easement, I mean, particular structure.
Okay, so where, where are you guys with that? Have you met with the water board and given the easement?
It's on today.
Today, okay. Did he issue a second letter to you or update for the board?
No, he doesn't need an update.
We, we need an update, he doesn't, we do.
He told Sean to let him know, he's gonna start the work, he's gonna start next week.
Okay, so you have an agreement with the water board to loop the water system and get it...
It's on the plan.
It is, it's on the plan.
Is it on the plan now?
It is, it's been on the plan. While we were looking last meeting, it was not the endorsed plan, so it's here. So, they're fine.
Okay, so it's going by that?
Yep, they're fine.
All right, and completion of that is when?
By November first.
Is that, and when is that curve coming out or the hill?
By November first.
So you guys are doing both at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, now who's, who's leading that effort? That's what we were trying to figure out on the site.
Leading what effort?
Well, is the town taking the charge? Are you taking the charge? Is the water department taking the charge?
Well, the water main is on my property and the water main that has to extend for the loop, unit construction's gonna do. And we're gonna work with Bob to do that roadway alignment project all at the same time.
Okay. Bob, is he, are you spearheading that or is he spearheading that? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
They're actually spearheading it to start.
Okay.
I'm just going to help them with conservation.
Conservation, okay.
They're gonna start it after we go through conservation.
And where's...
On the agenda for the tenth.
But it's not a notice of intent, it's just a...
RDA, okay. All right, so that takes care of that. So what do we get for loose ends? We got, we got two engineers that gotta meet and get a final report out to us, right?
I can get the, I mean, they, they provided their input. Phil Henry, I know the applicant has reached back out to Phil Henry in regards to the tree and asked what trees they, she was referring to. And Phil said that he was, the tree line, as depicted on the plan, appears to be approached upon. Whether it was a result of the new water liner and back additional trees were cut that shouldn't have been can only be determined with a survey of the proximate area and subsequent overlay. So I don't believe that our engineer can, should survey the site, but we can take that action if you would like.
No, I'd like to say that...
It's like they were gonna do the site anyway, weren't you guys?
I'd like to say that I talked to Cory, that I bought it, the director bought it, so the water line. And he's more concerned, Cory, correct me if I'm wrong, he's more concerned with work going on the top of the hill on that particular lot. He doesn't want people looking down into his backyard. He's, you know, geographically much lower. So I told him I'd help address that issue with the type of house style, location, floor plan of the house to try and minimize anybody staring into his backyard and, and then see if there, if he can accomplish that completely with house placement, then I'll work with him or I'll put up some sort of tree buffer fence or something or up on top, past, past the water easement. He actually, Cory, he'll tell you, he, when he bought the house, he did a bunch of tree work. A lot of these, that water line is thin on that left-hand side over there that you started the site lot.
Yeah.
Is because that was thinned out when he bought the house. Could result, I think, was in coaching or driving Cory, is that correct? Or just more from the past winter, more preventative data from the property?
Okay.
Why do the arbivitae like six feet apart like we've done in some cases?
You know, we always have the buffer zone to put in. We just, I don't know if you want to dictate a species at the moment, just to see what...
Yeah, I said, like, I really don't know yet.
Right, I know, it's hard to, hard to tag that.
Let me get there and then I'll, we'll see how we can attack it.
And did we determine if we can kick that easement further to the right to give a bigger...
The easement can't move, but Phil already confirmed you have a site that the, the water line in the easement is already bumped over. And in my conversation with Tom today, which I was sure he was gonna say anyway, you know, they're not, they don't want any trees planted in that easement.
Yeah.
They don't want to replace that nine trees and cut down a hundred trees.
How?
It's twenty feet wide.
No, I mean, they want the full easement, no trees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they need to.
And why couldn't the easement move, just out of curiosity, if it needed to be?
Phil said, like, he said they had a meeting with Tom, the water department, and they, they determined that was the only place it could go.
I can just say...
Unfortunately, it has to be that way.
Has to be.
It's like, it has to be twenty feet, it's a standard.
No, I don't mean the width of the easement, I mean, the whole easement size. That was what I was trying to figure out.
It's here, yeah.
So, where is...
I don't know why, one, we're easing, uh, we've been...
Yeah, it's, it's, you go by az bolt, so, oh, so there's a house coming up there. That's why.
You can.
So you got a house right down low.
Right. Front of, yeah, it's got the statue.
So this is coming in front of, let me get the front end in here. Okay, so that explains that you can't move too much unless they want on the other side, but then that's like, do much could you...
No, no, there's never, this goes.
Yeah, depends on where that was over there, yeah.
Right, so, unfortunately, it stays there.
Yeah, because that lot number, uh...
One.
That one? Yeah, there's not gonna be much of a buffer, you guys are gonna be right next to each other. Looking how that is, I mean, fifteen foot setback.
Well, there's distance, there's just no trees.
Yeah, and the easement's gonna be... Just trying to think.
They need a proper access.
Why is it, just out of curiosity, why is it that they didn't do complete loop within the system back down?
That's what I, I can't understand.
Yeah, why, why not keep the loop system within the, within the subdivision? For the water department?
It can be the water board, yeah.
Yeah. Al, were you there with the water board when they made this decision? Did they give any insight? Because I, you know, we always loop the system, but it just seems odd to come in one way and out the other. Unless they're trying to extend the line somewhere, but even then, it would be, still be in and out of...
But there's not a looped road, so there's no, it's gotta go cross-country.
It's gotta go across, yeah.
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 So there's no, you're not gonna loop it back up upon itself on the road? That, it's the only way to do it was go cross-country somewhere?
Yeah, that's why, I didn't know if they were extending further down center or, or something like that. I was just curious to their insight as to why they wanted it that way.
They just don't want dead ends, they...
No, the loop system, I get it, we do that all the time. Why they specifically came in this way, that was my question.
There's always gonna go through one of the lots, always.
All right, so... Right.
You better make that homeowner very much aware about that twenty-foot easement.
Yeah, they can't put anything on it or sheds, no.
It's in the, it's in the deed.
I saw the homeowner in my home.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna come up in the title, exam.
It's gotta go in there because twenty years later, you know, it's got a second or third owner and they're out there with their old talk at toy, tearing up everything.
Yeah.
Thinking they're gonna do something.
It's another good reason for dig safe being what it is, but still.
Yeah.
Nothing's perfect.
People forget about the easements, it doesn't matter, you know, we put them in all the time. It's in the deeds, it's transferred, it's, you know, it still comes up later.
They don't read them.
We can...
Yeah, they don't read it, you know, closing is this thick and out they go, so... Yeah, it's, it's almost like you gotta put flags or something up there, but...
Okay, I'll read.
Okay, all right, so, so we'll revisit the lot one buffer zone after discussion, real...
We're gonna stake it out, like, there's a request to stake it out. We'll see what you need, if we, whatever, they're in discussions on what they need for screening and over there on the, to the right of that.
Where's the, the driveways going on?
The driveway is pretty close, given the topography, pretty close to the cul-de-sac.
They're coming off this way.
Oh, they're coming up that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you have some little flexibility there to do some stuff.
Yeah, I mean, fighting grade, trying to, you know, keep his little amount of cuts and fills there, yeah.
Tough area by your driveway there, we spend a little time out there going over. Okay, so, so just, we'll just revisit buffers on lot one and with your butter later. You guys devise a plan and come in with it.
Right, we'll, we'll get confirmation on all those erosion controls too and then obviously you have some of the info on the quantity of soil. And we just continue to plug away.
If you could just have Phil Christensen respond to Phil Henry.
Right.
Those five items.
Yeah, these guys can do that and just submit it anytime and then Rebecca will get it and then she'll kick it out and then that answers all those questions. And then paperwork follows. So what's, uh, construction calendar you were gonna, said you had one?
It's, it's just on the plan, I'm just following the plan.
No, I mean, is it on there by...
The schedule?
A schedule?
Yeah.
It says September, October, November.
Oh, it doesn't go by month.
That's what I mean, yeah.
It's just a sequencing.
Okay, not a sequencing, I mean a calendar, calendar. For, for the ten day, we talked about this, for the ten day requirement to notify the board for all the milestones, just to, and it can slide, that's fine. But you have a calendar of what you're trying to do and then that's when Phil Henry's gonna be out there or we're gonna be out there, something like that. So that's why we were talking about it on the site, you, you already know. And it can move, that's fine, but for the, for the rest of September, for October, if you've got it and into November, because you talked about the road and the water. That, that's all we need, if you can submit that anytime.
Yeah.
Because that'll, that'll meet your requirement for the ten day notification, so we know to be out there.
I don't know where that requirement is, but I'll...
Yeah, we're working, I mean, I know that Phil's working closely with our Phil, with Rebecca, this is kind of the eyes and ears. We're gonna keep everyone informed when we're out there. We're not gonna miss any milestones.
Let her know and she'll let us know.
Yeah.
That's the way I want it to work.
The key is, we, we don't, we don't want to dig a hole in the ground and then have to open it up again. When there's inspections to be done, we're gonna make sure everyone knows that has to do an inspection so that they can take a look at it, do whatever they need to do.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, Rebecca, has that covered, I mean, we hit this pretty hard with the site and everything and it's the paperwork, you've still gotta trickle it in, the calendar, the two fills on the engine report. We got water sewer. Bob, do you have an agree, a formal agreement you can submit to the board just so it's on the file?
No. It's just that they're doing off-site improvements.
Right.
And they're, I was, I'm paving the road. I was gonna do that anyway, that, that, uh...
Realignment.
Hill and do the realignment, now they're doing the realignment.
So, well, just so that's, so the board knows exactly what the town's doing and what his responsibility is, what yours is, the water board is.
We did request that, and like, that while this thing was coming before us, let's get rid of that.
Right. That's why I had stopped paving Center Street, I wanted it, that hill. But then they brought it back, the engineer, Phil Christensen, when he designed it, went back and realigned the curve, which is good too, you know? Because if you walk down to lot one or his lot, the gentleman in the back, and you look up, you can't see the entrance to the, uh...
No, you come right around that curve.
The project, yeah.
Okay, so can we, can we get a formal of who's responsible for what?
Well, we have it now, we have it.
We do?
It's on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it says on the plan, the water board shall run sixty feet of pipe and, and with so many shut offs and hydrants, et cetera.
And, and Bob and Sean, unit construction, then open those actually up here.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm looking for a formal submission to the board so that we know for liability purposes who's doing what specifically.
I, I don't know what kind of formal submission that would be and we're...
Just a letter. The water department is responsible for this, Al's responsible for that, the town of Groveland's responsible for this. Because we got three parties involved. Al's new to the game on, onto that because he wasn't part of the subdivision planning. So, so he's coming in and then we have conservation who's got a little bit of a hand in this, but not much as well. So, where we have three parties involved, it'd be nice to know who's, who's responsible and for what.
There's no three parties, there's two parties. It's Bob and me through unit construction. And, no, for the roadway alignment, we're gonna put the water main in, they're gonna inspect the water main, it's approved.
Yeah, that's part of the subdivision.
Right, like the water main in the, in the, in the subdivision is fine, because it comes in under that. I'm just talking about crossing the road and tying in and all that.
Yeah, that's part of the subdivision.
But where, where are you tying in though? Isn't it on Center Street?
It is, but you have to tie into the main on Center Street as part of the subdivision, it's all the same.
We're doing, we're doing that all with the town. We're coordinating that through normal, normal channels. It's, you know, it's an off-site improvement that the town requires. We're working closely with them, they're communicating and make sure, if you guys want copies of all the correspondence, I mean, you're gonna see them probably anyway. But that kind of off-site stuff is working in the roads, realigning things, whatever the, the town needs to be comfortable with that, we're gonna provide.
Okay, so, so then we get a blank letter that says you're gonna work with all boards of the town, provide everything that's necessary, et cetera, that's gonna be done.
It only says it on the plan, Bob, it tells right out the responsibilities for, for me, for the, for the contractor and for the town. It says it right on the plan.
Okay.
That's part of the one.
Okay, it just seemed a little fuzzy with conservation meeting the other night.
Conservation's an RDA, the wetlands is, you know, we're out of the thirty-five, don't disturb, we're eighty feet away. We're only gonna probably need eight bell and silk fence. I've already talked to Mike, I already appeared before them for one meeting, I'm going back on the tenth.
Yeah, that's...
We're looking at a negative with conditions essentially.
We're gonna do a negative.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was the conservation board that called, that had a question because they initially thought that, that you weren't doing any of it, so the, so the water department had to file the NDA and then, and then they said, oh no, the, the road commissioner's doing it and so that's what I'm just trying to nail down.
We already nailed it down, I'm already doing it.
So you're do, Bobby, you're gonna, you're overseeing your stuff, water department? Do we have anything else coming back from water?
I can follow up with Tom tomorrow and ask if he has any, if he can finalize and say whether or not he's going out for inspection or what the schedule is for that so that they're good to go. And then I can also follow up with Road Mary DC, the conservation agent, and make sure that the RDA and everything is confirmed and, and issued as they stated.
Got it, okay. So we just got those four or five things to tie in. And when can you get, submit the rest of that stuff, including the construction calendar?
Sometime by the end of next week.
So, meet everybody's approval then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. We want the next one on?
Hold on, I just got a couple of questions. Hours of operation, so, so far it's...
Yes, state your name and address.
Sorry, Cory LeBlank, one fifty-seven Center Street. So I'm just curious, so the hours of operation, so weekends have been good and those guys, it's basically been quiet over there. So I'm just curious how this is gonna proceed as they go along, is if logic...
The hours of seven A.M. to six P.M.
Sorry?
The hours of seven A.M. to six P.M., Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
Okay, they don't work, they don't do anything on Sunday.
And there's no way to change any of that for a Saturday, I mean...
Well, it says in, in the decision that, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, it's been quiet, I just want to make sure that that continues through this process.
Right, and, and that's per the decision it entrusted Al with working with. It's, I think, condition thirty to work with the residents to minimize to the extent possible, so he's...
Are you looking for a specific time?
No, I just wanted to make sure, so far after the first meeting, everything's went well. Quality of life has been good, trucks aren't using their jake brakes. It's, you know, like a regular neighborhood, I understand he's gotta work, but I just want to make sure that it's not impacting us through this whole process, so if that's...
Just so, you saw the thing, Cory, they were talking about that it's roughly from the design of the subdivision, it's gonna be roughly around twenty-two thousand cubic yards coming out of it. And to date, we've got about fifteen thousand three hundred acres, so not, not much more of that. And then the infrastructure, and then you're getting into house building, the house lots, which is...
That's normal, yeah, that's normal.
Probably shouldn't even touch you at all, so in, in another three months, four months max, you're gonna be over the, um, back there.
Okay, thank you.
Are you planning on building all the houses at once?
Um, yes, I hope they're all sold and I have to build a mall at once.
So you're selling them individually, you're not building them all at once?
See how it works out.
Yeah, most of them have been doing two at a time, we've seen.
I'll do two or three at a time, I'm hoping for a couple sales upfront, but we'll see about it.
All right, we done with this one for the time being?
Yeah, they got everything in and we're gonna keep on it. So by next Friday, everything again?
I'll get an update.
Yeah, okay.
Everything I get outside the news, the email with all the updates and all the porn.
And, um, just out of curiosity, why so long on the calendar?
What do you mean?
For the milestones and...
I got a lot of stuff on my plate.
Yeah, it's just, just trying to keep it, we're trying to keep ahead of that, just so we don't miss anything between now and then. I mean, you can update it as much as you want.
The inspections will be going on. Well, everybody, uh, the, the inspections will be going on.
Yeah.
If you don't have the calendar, we're gonna be inspected, so I'll get a piece from there.
Yeah, because we need to know what the next, what the next, uh, thing is ten days prior, so I'm trying to figure that out, and.
I don't get the ten day prior, what do you know?
Okay, dude.
For each, for each task that I have to complete on the subdivision, you expect a ten day prior notice?
Mm-hmm. Notice, yeah, yeah.
But you solve that with a calendar, because you know, give or take.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it, I mean, it's changeable, there's weather, there's everything else, I mean, we'll, we'll make a best guess.
Right, right, yeah, I don't expect that every single day it's exact.
It's a dart, it's a, it's a dart, and then we just check, hey, you still on for next Tuesday doing this, and then if, if it's, that's why, you know, Phil's gonna be there, we're gonna be there, you know, or whatever, that's what we're trying to get ahead of, so we don't, you know.
Right. We'll, we'll give you a, a best, a best estimate of.
That's it, it's all it is, it's the best guesstimate.
Yep.
But at least we got something, and then if it's, you know, then we get something to work with, and if it slides, it slides.
You can refer to section six point four of the subdivision rule and regulations, and it will give you the, at least seventy-two hours in advance of each stage of work, and it lists out each observation that the planning board is looking for in terms of notice, uh, specifically that seventy-two hour window.
Yeah.
Uh, but you can use that as a template, and it's a good starting point.
Right, and, and that covers also obviously making sure you know when something, but in terms of just kind of our overall grand plan of things, it, we'll give a best shot to, so that you have a general, you know, fifty thousand foot view of, of what our intentions are, and when we're, we'll get to it, but obviously we'll adhere to all the other requirements, so the proper inspections and.
And that'll be followed under your construction monitor, which you designated as Phil Christensen.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, let me get Phil in, and we're good? Good, okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Brad Leels, you got an update on that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here.
On the agenda.
Nelson Street.
Oh, they are, uh, they are not coming in today, uh, they are trying to file with the ZDA to make sure that their use is allowed first before going through the site plan review and the disturbance process.
Okay, just, just to bring the board up to date, when we were doing all these buy rights and everything, the first stop, no matter what it is, whether it's buy right or not buy right, is with the building inspector.
Right.
So, he has determined that this is not a buy right, he has to go to zoning board first to.
So do, what is he proposing?
He's, he's proposing storage, storage units, this is Nelson Street.
Okay. Right.
Okay, and there's just gonna be.
So storage is it?
Two buildings of storage units.
Okay.
It's a little bit different layout than what he originally, I haven't seen the plan yet.
So it changed from the condos?
Yeah, instead of the one that was going like this, I think he's got one, two going like this.
Wasn't there originally twenty-five condo units coming in there?
That was before.
Yeah.
The last time he came in, it was.
Yeah, that was way back, so.
No, he's talking about seven units, that's what he, yeah, condo units, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll see him, he's gonna, he's gonna be filing concurrently, once he files with the Board of Appeals, with us, and then also with GEICO, hopefully.
So everything at once?
So, yeah, it's, and it's kinda like, when you're looking at a lot of things, it, it's better that they do that, it's almost, we've talked before about, especially home building, if they go to GEICO first. We can't make them do that, but we can highly suggest they do that. So let's find the turtles first.
Sure.
You know, rather than, you know, later on, once we've approved the whole thing, that's my way of looking at it.
Yeah, a lot of times though, GEICO won't approve something, because it changes here. You can start the process absolutely, but the, all the approvals have to come down.
Yeah, yeah. I know, it's, it's just that what, what we went through with across the street.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, thirty thousand dollars down the drainage and engineering fees.
Yeah, because you can keep continuing until you've nailed down everything, but.
No.
Right across from the fire station here, a guy that was gonna build three units of businesses.
Oh, right over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get turned down, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Who is that? He was gonna build a post office and all that stuff over there, he's gonna relocate it?
No, no, not that I know, not, not with that one, I didn't know.
Yeah, that is, okay, alright.
Okay, um, oh, the who?
Yeah.
They have to submit preliminary plan, subdivision plan, what's the opinion of on the, on the agenda that's actually preliminary? It's for, uh, Maple Street and Oak Street off of Sand Street, and what we're doing, what we did is, um, just, we wanted a build out plan, a potential build out plan, which did only two of the lots that can be built out, so we, we did, we added those to the plan, and we committed filing for both. So we're gonna do, uh, filing for Maple Street off of Sand Street, and Oak Street off of Washington Street, all in the same property, two lots in each of the two short little roads. We have the applications, the forms that are needed, obviously the plans, have some small property blocks to those, it's easier.
So you have two, two, two lot subdivisions?
Yes, yep, exactly, we have one off of Maple Street, and one off of Sand Street, can call Maple Street, it's about two hundred and fifty feet of a road for two lots, and then off of Washington Street, we have another small, hundred and eighty foot long cul-de-sac for, of Oak Street, for two lots off of.
Okay, you got the cul-de-sac there, because, you know, for emergency vehicles, they have to have cul-de-sacs, they have to get back out, they can't just get trapped.
Yeah, we all turn around with an aisle in the middle, that's where the drainage.
Okay. Is that the max build out for the whole property?
It is.
Just those two?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you see one of the sheets down to the door?
Sure. Want the, just, yeah. There's a, there's a possible upload, it's like twenty-five inches, it's gonna be retained for, by, uh, the huddle.
Uh, which is, which one?
Uh, give me a little one.
Well, we got a big one.
So, so you go, where's the, where's the one that's gonna be? Okay, so this one here, that's what I was, is this, what's gonna happen with that?
You won't.
So is this gonna be donated to the town, is it supplied by?
No, it's contiguous with the rental land, they may keep it, they may.
Well, see, that's why we were asking about the potential max build.
Well, that's the new house.
Oh, no, that's.
Well, it's not possible.
So.
That's the new house.
That's what we have now, it's the same as it is.
Yeah, but if you own land in conjunction with, that's.
There's a house on this one.
There's a house on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different.
Okay, so even.
Different owner technically.
Different owner?
Yeah, they own this as a trust, and that's different owners, so it's technically different owners.
And how many acres on this one?
That's three, three point three, I believe.
So this, this is two lots.
That's a lot of land, basically, that is, so, chances are it's not, gonna go a whole lot with it, but.
Yeah.
So we have the application, I don't know what the fee would be for the four lots, so.
Two, if you're running.
Two, two lots.
Two, two lot subdivisions, so it's gonna be two of everything, so, um.
Are these, names of these streets etched in stone?
They're tentative names.
Because we might have those two streets already on that.
I did look, I didn't see them, but they.
No.
You can check with the assessments.
Cemetery.
That counts as public way?
That's public, yeah.
Really?
It's accepted by mass.
That's right, yeah, up there, they're all trees.
Cemetery?
No, yeah.
Old tree streets.
Uncle look.
Maybe one of them. That's right, that's.
I'm sorry, you can't name your street that, there's dead people there, or not?
Yeah, I leave the light on every now and then for you.
They're really quiet neighbors.
Yeah.
See, but this is, this is what I'm talking about, it's, yeah, so here's wetland, not much there, but this is here. Okay. Borders, borders, is the house here?
Yeah, right.
Existing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, but, you know, wouldn't be much, but this could easily concern us, so.
But it would have to be separate, because this is always one lot with an existing house.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, it's the methodology.
Sure you can't force them to build that out.
No, 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 build it out, just show them.
No, no, but you can, because it's different.
It's held in contiguous ownership?
See, he's hundred and forty, but then he's gonna level it.
Because this would make sense to go back over here.
It's not contiguous.
And you couldn't.
They picked up frontage on Calm Street.
But that's part of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out on that, because this would make sense to go up here, and push this back, and it would give this some of the frontage right here, but then we're not doing this twice.
This is the second one, yeah, coming off the wall.
The only way to build this out, kind of, is adhering to all the regulations, you can't change.
That's great.
Right, right.
He's using some of the parallel.
And that's just difficult this way, but.
It's all changing what they're gonna do.
Yeah, no, 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 I got it. And so, so the only access is, since you're here, unless you get another one, you can't, you know, you're here, you know, coming up through, on Benjamin Street, and then we get something, but it would be best over here.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it is, right?
Right here, right?
Yeah. Um, yeah, yeah, see what I mean?
It's in a trust.
So that, that would be.
To keep a lock of the house.
Right, so carve this off, existing.
But you couldn't get, sure you couldn't miss off, so you can.
Why? Is this, is it in here? Is it the what?
Because you have to keep an eye for the existing base, and then carve two off, that's how far it goes.
It's backline, oh, this is, is this the RB or RA? RB, so it's thirty.
It's IRA in the back, RB in the front.
The existing lot, this one.
By the way.
That's IRA.
That's our.
Get a bill from Camet on Homestead.
I want it because on the back.
Okay, so until he gets us, that gets that done.
Right, that's what I mean, so, yeah, so this could only be.
Give you thirteen oh three point thirty-three, okay?
You could, but you couldn't do it now. Because it's just a nowhere. No, because you're looping onto property, it's not.
The whole thing?
All the way after, so.
This, this is the.
They're going back and forth now.
This is the hundred foot property, you can't loop it through.
Yeah.
Because you're pushing the house through.
They've already in the.
Right, they can have the roadway, but then they're pushing the house, because if we loop it, it's. I think it's better to put theirs.
Well, I know.
Because if they, because if they loop it, then they can have more here.
Right, exactly what I'm trying to get to, get at.
But if it's not looped, then they can't, so if you keep it unlooped, you're minimizing what you can put here.
Also get it here to another, which is, which has happened two or three times. Bill, what's the big, big picture plan here, I'm trying to.
There is no big picture, this is it.
This is it? No, 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 I mean, okay.
We're not gonna extend this road, we're not gonna extend that road, it's not gonna happen.
So this is not to be a further building lot ever, one house on three points.
I wouldn't say that, because we have front of our venue.
That's what I'm asking about, okay.
That's all, that, that would be potentially a four MA or.
Right.
So.
Should be back to.
Just two lots, but it'd be off of here.
But it's also a different one.
Right, but Benjamin Street is, is not a, a full blown fifty foot right away.
It doesn't have to be for two lots.
Doesn't have to be, oh, boy.
That's only two lots.
I think there was, I mean.
At max.
So now then you have to six.
We can, we can go down to Pickle Lane, which is twenty feet wide, and you have, you bring the houses down there, so.
Yeah, but they're not bringing up to six, because you can't access either of these off of those.
Yeah, I know, I do, it's, it's narrow up here, I know that.
You wanna look at a.
Six.
Right, but you have access on either of these off of Benjamin, it doesn't matter.
No, 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 okay, um, okay.
Thirty-two, thirty-two Benjamin Street is not part of this property.
No, I get, I, I get that.
So we're not doing anything with thirty Benjamin on this subdivision.
On this particular plan.
We're doing two lots off of Sand, two lots off of Washington, and there's gonna be a possible upload with it, we're not sure what they're doing with that, it's mostly wetlands, but I'm not sure what they're doing with it.
And they won't be able to access either of those from Benjamin, or maybe able to access these two streets off Benjamin from here.
How do we, how do we treat?
Right, right, no, no, I don't disagree with all of that, okay, my question is though, is, is this, because we have, if, if, even if you go up here, then you got three. One, two, three.
Right.
So why not loop these through, so you have an in and out, and that eliminates two cul-de-sacs, an in and out, and gets everything on that road infrastructure, fifty foot right aways, everything else, instead of clogging up Benjamin Street, and, and two cul-de-sacs.
Well, because those.
We'd also have a water loop system, if there's, is there water down in Washington, or you don't?
Yeah.
Yes, it's water in that hole.
Um, that's, that's why I wanted the, the max build out.
Yeah, but you're not, I mean, you're not blocking the traffic in Benjamin with two houses, which is all that is.
No, but it's, it's a very narrow street, um, going through.
It's thirty-five feet.
It's a thirty-five foot right, right away, I don't think the pavement's thirty-five feet.
It's also there in.
Which is actually.
So it's gonna be, it's two houses down there, so I'm gonna be two houses down there, then it'll be more.
Right, right, so.
Right, so it's two houses down there, like, it's not in traffic, it's not.
Right, I, I missed, you missed, I, I guess I'm not being clear.
No, I understand, I understand what you were saying, but I don't think it is probably.
I see two more houses in here.
Right.
Right, so why not do them now on a plan, and loop a road, instead of doing three cul-de-sacs to nowhere? Is what I'm getting at.
It's also the grades in that whole area.
It's not economically feasible either, it's just not possible to put a road within and get, get mounted, it's just not gonna lay out properly.
Okay, come here.
Yeah, just look how, but look how steep this is.
So what do we got? Um, what's that, a hundred fourteen, a hundred twelve, what's that? Hundred twelve, eighty-six, so we get a foot, thirty foot.
Yeah.
So, but we have houses up in here, a hundred, a hundred thirteen, okay, Bill, talk to me about strategy for a second, I'm planning, only because I'm, I'm trying to figure this out, and just tell me where I'm off, okay. So, y- yeah, we see the third in here, whenever, okay, I got it, what would prevent, okay, this somehow looping through here, eliminating the cul-de-sacs, it's gonna open that, which is coming anyway, okay. Um, but then we don't have three little tiny cul-de-sacs, we, we have a fifty foot right away to a fifty foot right away.
You get enough lots in there, it'd be worthwhile to build it, but.
Well, well, it's, it's the same, it's the same roadway, if you're putting another one in here, and you got one over here, and you got one over there, what's the difference?
We're not planning anything with thirty-two Benjamin, we're not doing anything with thirty-two Benjamin right now.
That, that's not my question.
It's not part of the subdivision.
I, I, I hear you with that, you're not answering my question.
We're not doing anything with it, not gonna extend it over today, we're not gonna do any lots out of that, this is gonna be two, four lots, that's what we're proposing, this is.
So, so. I got that, okay, so, so from right now, you're gonna submit a letter to the board, it says thirty-two Benjamin Street shall in perpetuity never be developed, okay, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking this question.
It's not part of the subdivision. It's not even owned by the same people.
We can't do whatever we wanna do in our life, you know, as long as we go by the rules.
Okay, does anybody else see this here? Okay, I'm trying to save you two, three cul-de-sacs, right now, and I'm just asking a simple, why?
It's not possible to do it.
That's my question.
If you extend all that road, you could say number lots, it wouldn't be worth it.
But how much is it, well, wait a minute, how, that's what I'm, give me a.
As we do, we design these to be the most feasible thing in the.
So if you take out two complete cul-de-sacs in a hundred and twenty-five, in a hundred and twenty foot in diameter, right?
Well, we can discuss this at the preliminary hearing, this is a file, this is not, I'm not here to discuss this at this point.
Well, it's, I'm trying to get to a, to a, to a buildup.
This is not a hearing, this is not open for discussion. This is the buildup, right here, four, four lots, that's the buildup, that's what we're proposing, we're not proposing any more on this particular property.
So what's the distance on that, is this one in forty?
Just like this person's property, not part of this property.
One, two, three.
And here is empty pot, which is about a foot, and not putting anything in.
So. Eight, so three hundred and twenty feet, twenty three, you're chucking two hundred feet more roadway, and that would be the same, roughly.
You have the grading, you have to do for that, that's a lot different.
That's, that's my question on the grading.
It's a lot different.
Yeah. You, you kinda gotta go up there.
That's what I mean, yeah. Well, that's, that's why I'm asking Bill, he's been up here.
It's a lot different, but it's different in you're losing buildable lot to put the road in.
Yeah, probably.
Where would you lose, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Because this house, like, if you're planning one lot here, right?
You know, I mean, any lots on this side, nothing on this side.
Wait, wait, why?
We're gonna lose this lot, we're gonna lose part of that, 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 two property.
Wait, 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 if this comes in here and goes like this, why?
Because then they're changing what can fit in here, because you still have to carve out this lot, because this is your house.
Right, so, so this house is, it says existing well, but we, I don't have a foundation.
And, yeah, this is, this is not part of this.
But you still have to keep an acre here for this house, right?
Not part of it.
Right, so we get three.
Right, so then you're only getting two left here, so that's the lot slots, so by the time you reconfigure this.
But thirty-two Benjamin is not part of this property.
And the grading of this isn't making your house, or isn't making your.
No buildup in thirty-two Benjamin.
Can't.
That's the future possibility, that's all of this, but we don't know. We're not doing it in this one.
You know, is, is what it is, and.
They don't have to do it.
No, they don't, but they, eventually they could somehow, some way come in and into this. What he's trying to say is you do one road through.
One, where it builds through, and if you could do it.
But you only want one more lot out of it, that's about it. Would you get, get an A and R off of Bell Street?
And then you take out two cul-de-sacs, and then, actually, three, there'd be three cul-de-sacs.
Right.
Coming in, so eliminate them all, and that would save money for them.
But it doesn't save money, in the, in the end, it's probably a wash. Because the cost of everything you had to do to make that looped road is the same as those.
Okay, so then, so then we have a better project with an in, with an out.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not, because you're losing a lot. It's not for them.
Yeah, I mean.
You're losing a lot.
We, we can go where the plan is submitted, and then begin to talk as, as we go through the preliminary process. Um, now you have a question on affordable housing, I mean, where it's four, but it's on two cul-de-sacs.
Are you gonna file it?
Yeah, that kicks in too, yeah.
Are you gonna go right to a definitive? Before you file it?
Because they're going on two cul-de-sacs, resulting in.
Two on each.
Two, one each, and they don't, they don't hit, hit it until you hit three.
Yeah, but it's on the same plan, same file.
But it's the same.
So it's four.
No. We have, we have to sort that one out first. We, you know, once they start, I mean, we can, we can tell them the basically, you know, what we think, but we'll check.
All right.
To make sure we're right.
Okay, so we get two, two subdivision filings, one plan for simplicity, um. And forms.
Two, two lots subdivisions is what.
See if any of the fee schedules are in the box. Okay, maybe down the bottom, I'm not sure, I gotta go through that thing. You didn't have to bring fee schedules in.
I have it on, um, I put it on my.
Form A, they had them on the wall, but.
It's a two lot subdivision.
You want me to go get it?
No, he's, she's got it, she's got it. Oh, you got it, oh, okay.
I put it on the website, so it's on the website, so if anybody wants to go to the website, they can find it.
So we got two two lot subdivisions, so it's, what is it, two thousand?
Five hundred plus five hundred for a lot.
Oh, a prelimin, okay, five, five.
Five hundred, and then five hundred a lot, so it's fifteen hundred a subdivision, so three thousand.
Right.
It's two, two, two.
Yeah, two twos, yeah.
Yes.
So five two twos on preliminary, five thousand each into the engineering review.
And then for the engineering, for a preliminary, we have listed two thousand five hundred for the engineering fee.
Each. Yeah, so it'd be five thousand.
Oh, for the double yes.
Yeah, okay, so, um, Bill, do you have checks to the town?
Uh, so, yeah, two fifty.
Three thousand plus five thousand for engineering.
And that's, that covers both.
We choose our own engineer this time? Our own engineer that looks over this project.
To review, you got, you got Bill behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes.
No, he was the engineer's team, that's what you did.
He was the engineer on Homestead.
He started that.
Yes, you continue.
But it, it has to be one of the three, yes, it has to be one of the three.
One of the three, yeah.
One of the three that the town approved, yes.
Yes.
I don't know what Peter Williams' status is, it doesn't.
So then it needs to either be to Camet or Civil Design Group of Andover.
What do you, Phil?
Those are the only two on my file right now.
Okay.
What was the other fee?
It's fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred and twenty-five and twenty-five.
Engineering is five thousand, twenty-five hundred.
Twenty.
For engineering fees.
Engineering.
Twenty-five for engineering.
Yeah, so do you have the applications and the checks, so we can.
I'm sorry.
Can you explain the fees, please?
Sure, it's fifteen hundred dollars per subdivision, and you're technically got two subdivisions, so it's three thousand. It's twenty-five hundred dollars for each engineering fee, so it's five. And then you could either choose between Eddie, or Eddie, Woody, Camet, or Civil Design Group out of North Andover, which is Phil Henry.
And we can inquire with GZA to see if there's somebody else who's taking over, if they're all.
I thought he said he was, that was his last one he was doing, but that was a while ago.
Well, he, he said he was retiring, and GZA didn't want it.
Oh, okay, so.
But, the problem, the complication is that Peter, when he retired, his wife was still alive, she passed away.
We can confirm that. Yeah, I don't know what his status.
And I don't know what his status is at this point, so.
That's why I didn't know if it was a larger firm.
Yeah, no, I'm.
It is a large, a much larger firm, but I think it's almost too large for this.
Yeah.
All right, so the civil design came.
I'm gonna call Peter anyhow, because I gotta, I got, I gotta send him up to Nichols, which he had done that as well, because we, we got the money on that the other day.
Bill, is that form B?
Form B in there, form B one.
Okay, can you just, you got three copies?
They're all set.
Three.
Form B for the preliminary.
Right.
And then form D, D one, and D E.
And, and you, you get the surveyor's certificate, access to property.
That's all.
B one, and E.
Okay, on that, okay.
Here are all, here are these three copies of them, and then there's ten copies of small ones, and I have four of those, I can give you more, I can give you PDFs, whatever you like.
If you have electronic copies of all of that, that would be great if you could send that over.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so if somebody can look through those forms, and we get the checks, then we can get the approval for the submission.
Bobby, can you reach that?
Pass those forms to Lisa.
Exactly, the stack of forms. Thank you.
With quiet, how come we cut down the end?
Oh, that's fine, I'm in the corner.
All right, yeah, two checks, because one goes to, one's to the town, the, yeah.
What's it, what's that one for?
It doesn't.
Well, one goes to the town, the other's the engineering account.
It's two separate accounts, the treasury will launch it, one and divide it.
You, you can bring them back and get on to, uh.
Unless Denise wants to take it, divide them out.
She won't do that.
Okay, you wanna do that? Okay, it's, it's, it's three thousand, town of Groveling filing fees, five thousand engineering fees.
And we have a new escrow agreement as well, that you will, you will need to fill out, so I can send that to you electronically, and you can just sign it, and it agrees to the fact that you'll be paying that, any additional funds will be returned to you. Um, if there is, or requires additional review, you will need to replenish that based upon the review that's needed, but it's just an agreement that we can have for the board, and it will go along with that account, so that you'll have that on record, so I can send this to you, it's very easy, and you just email it back to me.
Okay, thank you, all right, I'll put the three thousand.
Okay, and Rebecca, are we gonna do the submittal to the other boards now?
Yes, I will, as soon as I get the electronic version, I'll follow up and deliver them to the department.
With that section three, four, five.
Yes, that's the one that we had discussed.
Yeah, great. All right.
You want to sign those as well, or what?
I don't sign any, so, I don't get to sign anything.
Yeah, you gotta sign it. There's three of them, you gotta endorse.
Yeah, I don't sign anything, you sign it.
Should we leave the names?
Yeah, for now.
Bill, can you, can you push those other two forms over, so we can sign all three?
Thank you.
And so you get a time clock one. Rebecca, do you wanna time clock these with the clerk tomorrow?
Yep, I can do that first thing in the morning.
Okay, so that'll, all right, so they'll save you a trip, and then, um.
Okay.
And then when can you, you know, when can you get the other check in to Rebecca? Okay, so when you get the other check, then just.
I'm here, I'm here from nine to four, and a little early and a little later, so.
Okay, so, so then, once you get the other check, then you can timestamp it all, give them a copy, and then.
Yep, I'll make sure it's all done electronically, and also on paper form.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It should just be the form B, you actually.
Yeah, it's just that one block, Jim.
Yeah, okay.
Accept them till the form.
Just checking.
Yep.
Have one back when you.
Okay.
She's gonna timestamp everything.
On your motion to accept the application in the form Bs.
It's a motion.
Second.
Call for the vote, Jim?
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Are we gonna set a date for the hearing? So I can notify the others, yeah.
Motion to set a date for the hearing.
You wanna do that tomorrow, when we?
Yeah, we can, we can work, if you don't mind, we can just work closely and.
Okay, that's fine. Then you give me the advertisement form.
Yeah, but I, I did a whole new form and, and instructions, so we can walk through it together.
Wait, might I send an email, you can just send it back?
Sounds great.
Works good, okay. Thank you very much. We're in for. We haven't heard it, I see their letter, that's about right, right?
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You haven't heard back, we heard back, it was for the engineer that listed all the stuff that we discussed in the meeting.
Yeah.
So they are aware, the engineer, their engineer alerted the developer, and we have not heard.
They're aware.
We have plenty of these, right?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah. You wanna take that for the neighborhood?
Is this what you sent over?
I believe that's what I sent over.
Oh, is it, you got it?
Yep.
Yeah, I just hung, because we talked about the, the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
Okay.
After the meeting.
Oh, okay, so where's that going now?
So, you're going to grant an easement.
Go, 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 sorry.
Melissa Baker, Five Sunset Circle, um, after the last meeting, um, we spoke with the water department, and they had some reservations about trying to move the fire hydrant off of our property, um, because it's the end of the line, it's where it gets flushed.
Right.
Um, so we, um, spoke with the town, my husband spoke with Rebecca, and we basically said, we'll grant the town an easement onto the property for the fire hydrant.
And liability goes to the town?
This agreement's still being worked out right now, the developer's drafting it, once the developer drafts it, we're gonna review it with our in-house town council, and then we're also gonna share it with, um, the Bakers, and have their attorney look at it to see if they have any concerns about it, but we haven't seen the final language as of right now.
Yeah, so who's, Bobby, who's picking that up? So, so, because this is an odd one.
Develop a one, right?
So, so, um, just hypothetical, so, so we got a hydrant on private property, which we haven't done in modern times, okay? And it's, it can be moved, but for whatever the reason is, it's, you're accepting it to be there. So, that pipe breaks right there, or any issues come up there, where it's so close to the property, I mean, the house, and it's on private property, who picks up the liability if her house floats away?
Oh, it's not on private property now.
Yes, it is, it's her lot.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
But they're granting an easement for access and maintenance.
Right, so that's, my question is, that it's the liability issue, if it's in the right of way, well, it's the town's, you know, it goes in that, but if it's on private, for your private property.
No, she just said the water board doesn't wanna move it.
Well, there's, there's more to it, the, the actual service lines are so close up to the actual hydrant, that if they were to actually move the hydrant over or down where they had proposed, you'd actually have to eliminate service to all of the lots on the subdivision, so you'd have to rip up the whole entire, reservice every single lot, and then there's also a concern, um, with the pressure,
Yeah, they got some.
Yeah.
And, and that was one of the, the, the concerns the Bakers had raised, that they don't wanna ruin the pressure that they have currently, and by doing that, they were afraid of that, and then also disrupting their neighbor's services, so we were just trying to accommodate them as fast as possible, while also taking care of the, the hydrant and the easement and the access and the water in the town, so we, we just go.
So they ran all the distribution service lines of that hydrant?
Uh, right there, and that's why the water department was, uh, doesn't wanna take on the full responsibility of moving, because you'd actually have to.
So they brought the water line up, was it Harvard up there, and then they came up, and then they just parked it, and then they, they stopped right there.
Yes, and it goes all straight right up there.
And there's no loop out to?
It loops out the same.
Oh, it does loop out the same.
But the, in order to.
But they literally have to relay all the services, because that's not where they drew the services from.
Yeah, so where did they put the water shut offs?
There.
I don't know that.
Like, pretty much everything is there.
So do you have four water shut offs right there in front of that hydrant, for each individual house?
No, no, they, they go to the property.
Yeah.
Property line.
So, but is that with a two inch?
Yeah.
Just a two inch, uh, you know, plastic PVC?
No, one, one inch.
One inch, so they went, well, that explains the pressure issue, um, but what did they go out to, Salem Street left, Bob? Six inch, eight inch?
Yeah, it's eight inch, right, from Salem Street, and loops down to that.
So they came in, oh, so they came in Salem Street, and then looped out, so they, and then they didn't put the, so they just didn't tap off the main line?
Well, they did, they just tapped off the main line at the hydrant.
In one area, you know what I mean, in each, in each location, if the pipe came in, they didn't do T's.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just thinking.
I don't understand it either, though.
Yeah, it's just.
We can put, I mean, if, if that, if the board wants to speak to the developer about removing and, and redoing the line, then they're more than, we can definitely do that, we were just, and when I talked to, to the homeowners, they had mentioned that, well, they didn't wanna go through all of that.
Yeah.
All right, so, but that's not, to be honest, that's not your responsibility or liability, it's, it's a nice thought about disrupting services, that's the developer for doing this in the wrong, spot in the wrong, in the first place, but my question is, so we don't repeat history on this, okay?
That's excessive.
No.
No.
I would like to get to the bottom of that, it's, because this is a first that I've heard in twenty-six years, where everything is tied off of one area, where the lots are further spread out, so I'd like to prevent this from happening again, and if we have a reg change or something, we gotta tweak, that's why I wanna get into this. So can we get the water board in at our next meeting, and, and, and just have everybody explain how this happened, and what it is, and brainstorm from that perspective, because.
I don't know, that's, that's not a regulation change or anything, it's a practice issue.
I don't think it's, that's the reason. I don't think. I think it's tapped, some of those house, the first house lots tapped in front of it.
In front of it?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be a disruption, then?
Yeah, I don't think it's a disruption, you could move it.
Second, the, the other two are tapped.
I would think you could take that hydrant out and put it in the right of way that goes down to Dartmouth Street.
Yeah, that's, that's where.
Clearly, the water board differs. It was the original plan from the last meeting, and we were told by the water department that that would not be good because of the main service line and how it serviced all the additional lots.
Yeah.
They don't want the disruption in, on their property.
Main service line and how it serviced all the additional lots.
So that's what, we need to hear from them, and why, why is that?
Cut up the driveway, you know, that.
I can, I can definitely, um, talk to Tom and see if they have availability to come at the next meeting, or to provide a memo, or to provide something in writing.
I think the, the real, the real problem is, again, here you got Scott Green trying to figure out where he was that day, and he all of a sudden, he does right here, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that's why it ended up there, but then also, the garage on the original house he was gonna build is over on the left-hand side, not the right, going underneath the house.
Was on the.
Yeah.
So that really complicated that, once the driveway got built to go down.
Well, yeah, yeah, I don't disagree there, but, but just a, a hydrant ending up on, in the front yard is, is a lot.
Again, what it is, it's this notification of when something's gonna get done, he just went.
And did it.
And did it.
Okay, so, but they already gotta do a regrind anyway, and, and then fix that crown of the road, so, so not, not worry too much about that, but I, but I would like, just so I get it right, I'd love to hear from the water board, and have them explain this pretzel, uh, or spaghetti junction out there, with, with all the pipes, and how did that happen, and, and why is that so difficult?
I'm not sure again if it was the water department who actually constructed, I, I think it really, the developer.
No.
No, I think it was Scott, but, but.
But, um, I can definitely, um, see if they'll, if they're available, and if not available, if they can provide any additional documentation for your review, so that you can get a better understanding of exactly how this came about.
Yeah, and I, to me, it's, it's.
Tap the services in one spot.
I don't, I don't think.
I think so.
That you, you can, you can pin down the water department on it, Wally, because for the simple reason, Scott's out there just doing it.
No, 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 I mean, I mean.
And if that happens again.
The water department has to tap it, they're there, they tap the main.
Right. So, so in order to move it, which we, we asked them to do, and, and would like to do, and, and again, this goes back to liability, I mean, if the town of Groveland is gonna pick up every single dime, okay, of, uh, you know, Noah's Ark two over here, and if that thing breaks, uh, or there's a leak underground or something into your home, I mean, that's a big burden on the town that I don't think is too common, I, I haven't heard of that one yet.
If he said that's right where it's supposed to be, then it went along.
Would like to.
There's a problem.
I mean, if the town of Groveland is gonna pick up every single dime, okay, of, uh, you know, Noah's Ark two over here, and if that thing breaks, uh, or there's a leak underground or something into your home, I mean, that's a big burden on the town that I don't think is too common, I, I haven't heard of that one yet.
I don't think we'd accept it.
Right, so, so why are we doing it now, and we've still got a developer that we've had some issues, we, we got some work to finish up over there, so we're all gonna put it all in the same bill of waiting, so I don't understand why we just can't put that on in the spring project and just move it, come up with a plan now, and, and see where it is, so, there's obviously something I'm, I'm not getting.
He's level, he's level, I tell you, take the remaining money and do it yourself, every bit of it.
Well, that's okay, we can do that, we can, we don't have a problem doing that, that, that's, we've done it before, and that, and if this change went over, we'll get back to it.
That's a possibility, and, and told that.
Yeah.
You know.
We, we finished roads before, in town, you know, to get them right, and do them, so, okay, so, so, yeah, let's get at least clarification on that.
I'll also speak with their engineer as well, to see if they have any drawings or anything.
They should have an as-built, I don't know if they do, but they should.
Yeah, that'll be, yeah, and, and the reasons why we can't move it would be, if it's not in the town's dime, what, why can't we put it where it's supposed to be? Yeah, um, that's all.
I think one of the reasons why, Wally, is that they don't want to interrupt their, uh, lawn and driveway and everything else right now.
It's all gonna be put back, but it, and if, if it's true, but we're digging the street anyway, so.
Yeah, but the driveway, they. They're gonna, so they're gonna tear out the whole driveway, and put it back?
Well, I don't know that, that's, I, I don't, I don't know, I'd love to hear that, that's what I'd.
It would have, if they, if they'd have to move the entire line forward, they would, it would cut into that part that just, that hump that was put there back about over a year ago, so it's, I think he, did he just seal that driveway?
It would have to be.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or.
Seal that, but we gotta regrind.
No, they said they don't wanna, they don't wanna disturb the property, basically, why they.
We gotta regrind going on the road anyway.
That's why they say and leave the hydrant the way it is.
Well, we don't know that either yet.
Okay, well, just, we'll, we'll talk about it, and we'll get some time, so, we'll figure it out, so.
Let's talk to the water department. Alright.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay.
If there is a water leak, I know in the past, and it floods a cellar out there, that insurance gets involved with the, the town insurance.
Yeah, see, that, that's the problem, though, they sign over and allow it.
What you were getting to.
Yeah, they might say, oh, well, you allowed it, you know, so that, that's.
Well, easements are usually just made for access.
Well, they didn't know.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting one, so.
It is an interesting one.
What else we got?
We got a legal notice down at Groveland, to hold a public hearing on the no recreational marijuana for, was it a year?
There's a extension of the moratorium, and then also an outright prohibition on recreational marijuana in, um, the, the town itself, that was voted on by the Board of San Antonio.
Now, we have to set a date for this.
And if I may ask, could we set, uh, because of the fact that we need to have proper notice, uh, for this particular, before the, uh, special town meeting that's being, um, held on November twenty-six, I believe, was the date they came up with, could we set the next, uh, two, uh, well, preferably four meetings, so just the next two months?
Right.
Just so we can advertise things, and then get the preliminary hearing advertised, and all that other stuff.
One, one of the problems, I mean, I, I don't wanna go to, go back to the first and third, I mean, it's, right for now, I mean, is that gonna cause a problem, is any?
Two and four?
Just for the, I, I just need, I, it would be helpful for organizing and getting things advertised and, um, prepared for your review in a timely man, manner, if we could have at least just the next two months planned out, not the whole next year, just the next two months.
So which dates are you proposing?
Two and four, on the weeks, is that what you're saying?
Well.
I, I think Jim was alluding to.
Yeah, I mean, we, if, if we went to this, the first Tuesday in October, that's.
That's next week.
That's next week.
How many, how many meetings do we need?
Um, we just have to hold one hearing, so, I mean, it's, it has to be, it has to be advertised two, twice in a paper.
For ten days prior to the first public.
Right, so, I mean, if that's.
Well, two weeks from today is the ninth.
I mean, we can, we could tell you, go ahead and advertise it, and then, you know, at this point, you know, whether you wanna start tomorrow, it takes three days with Eagle Tribune, I can tell you.
Yep, so if I get it in on Thursday, I can have it posted by the next Tuesday.
Okay.
So, I don't need too much time.
Do we have fifteen day notice on this one?
Do you wanna go to the, the first Tuesday in October, or the second Tuesday in October?
Fifteen day notice. That's what I meant.
I thought it was fourteen.
Well, the first.
Well, it's fourteen, then we count that.
The first Tuesday can't work for this, so if we do the second Tuesday, that's the ninth, that's two weeks from tonight.
So, so, yeah, it's fifteen, yeah.
So, okay, I'm just gonna write, okay, next meeting.
But that's only gonna be seven days notice.
Yeah, but then you, you set your third, your, your second meeting in October.
And that would be the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the second meeting would either be the sixteenth, if we did them back to back, or the twenty-third, if we did them two weeks apart?
Twenty-third?
That's the fourth week of, that's the fourth Tuesday of October.
Okay.
So the ninth and the twenty-third?
Yeah, we'll try to October ninth, October twenty-third, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-third, so. I'm gonna be floating around, staying somewhere, okay?
Well, 'cause then, well, could we do the thirtieth then, because we have to miss the sixth, because it's election day of November?
Oh, yes.
Election day.
Um, so if, if instead of the twenty-third, we do the thirtieth, that's more than enough time to have it advertised, you could do one meeting in November prior to the special election, or the special town meeting.
So then what are you looking at in November with Thanksgiving?
You'd either have the thirteenth, the thirteenth, I guess, because the twentieth would be the Tuesday before, you really only need one meeting in November.
And then what? Is that what you need?
So November twenty is the thing?
We don't know what we'll need, that's the problem.
Uh, then November thirteenth would be the November meeting, and then the special election is the twenty-sixth, right, so you really have two meetings.
I believe that, that, I think it's the twenty-sixth.
Right, right.
I think, I'm, I'm pretty positive it's the twenty-sixth.
But it's just the twentieth would be tough, because that's the week of Thanksgiving.
Nope, that's perfect, so as long as, so we'll, we'll say just, um, October ninth, October thirtieth, and November thirteenth, or just October thirtieth and, uh, November thirteenth?
Uh, we'll probably have to have an October ninth meeting just for things.
Just for the, yeah, catch all.
Okay.
So three meetings for, for the next two months?
I don't wanna end up with eight items on the agenda, and they, they go forever.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Fifteen minute blocks?
Yeah, well, they never do go fifteen minute blocks.
Yeah, okay. What else we got?
Um. Not really.
That's it?
Nah. Done.
Okay.
Give me a.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah?
You had Brad Ladel on, and Jennifer tonight coming on, and Elton's true.
Yeah, he's not gonna show up.
Pardon?
He's not showing.
Did you know it before the meeting?
Yeah.
Didn't you have the courtesy, let me know, what you're sitting there for, you know what I'm here for?
I just thought you heard us.
Where'd I hear it?
Tonight.
You never said anything, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, he was brought up as the fourth item, and, you know, he's not, he's not coming, the way, the way that whole thing is not, I talked about how it's now set up, uh, that basically, he has, he, he had to go before the, uh, building inspector, okay, to see if it was allowed by right or not, and he had to go to the ZBA, so unfortunately, the, to, to go to the ZBA, the building inspector has to turn him down, then he files with the ZBA to get relief, it's crazy. Then he'll, he'll come in simultaneously to set up a site plan.